I would like to remind everyone to please make sure our cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position and also please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T Universe, and the City of Gadsden YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Alvin Nelson for the role call.
Councilwoman Tows?
Here.
Councilman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Back?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed? We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Heath Williamson to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, we do thank you for this day. We thank you for the blessings, Father, that you freely give us. Thank you for Jesus and that forgiveness most of all. I pray, God, that we are in tune with you, that we fully realize and understand your will and follow it, surrender to it in all things, that we bring you the honor and glory that you always deserve. Please give us your wisdom and guidance as we go through this meeting and go through the business at hand. May it be pleasing to you always and we give you the thanks. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session in council meeting held on July 30th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of account for the week of July 26 through August 1st.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Proclamation.
Motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation. Our first item, we do not have any unfinished business. This is a time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property located at 505 Davis Street in District 1, Yvonne Johnson, Odessa Keith, and James Keith being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? If you've come over to the podium, give your name and address.
Yvonne Johnson, 2216 East Broad Street, Gadsden. I'm the owner of 505 Davis Street and I'm in the process of working on this house and I need approximately 30 more days to finish up.
All right. Is there want anyone to speak in opposition?
Madam President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. While y'all were in executive session upstairs, Ms. Johnson and I had our executive session down here and she's, she has some issues that she's dealing with next door with another, a different private property owner. I'm going to try to help her work through some of that. She has made some progress and our department is certainly not opposed to her being given 30 additional days and I'll report about the council at that time. Thank you.
The pleasure of the council, I move that we give her 30 days.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to table for 30 days.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property located at 422 Hazelburg Circle in District 4, Tuscula LLC and Mutual Savings being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor?
Madam President, this case involves a house, tree fell on it, one of our recent storms. We filed our case in September of last year. There've been no improvements, there are no permits to improve and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Like to go ahead and move with the...
Second.
Move to abate. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property located at 2000 Rainbow Drive. This is a commercial building in District 4, Robert Chapman and Mortgage in favor of Joe Ronald Johnson and wife Betty A. Johnson being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there one, anyone who'd like to speak in favor?
Madam President, this case involves a vacant service station at 2000 Rainbow Drive. We filed our case in November of last year. As you can tell in the pictures, there've been no efforts to improve the situation. There are no permits to improve and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Mr. Harbison, I have a question. There appeared to be some vehicles and things that are still inside. What, what would become of the, anything allowed outside there?
With a resolution, with a resolution today, we'll go on the property and tow all the vehicles.
Yeah, okay.
Besides taking the building down.
That was it.
Okay.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate, second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property located at 106 North 28th Street in District 6, Nichols, Jackson, Clark being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone to speak in favor?
Madam President, we filed this case in September of last year. There've been no improvements, there are no permits to improve and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Item 13 regarding 2109 Norris Avenue has been removed from the agenda and the public hearing will be rescheduled for a later date. Our next public hearing is a resolution assessing abate, nuisance abatement for demolition. We have two, but this one is located, our property located at 4 Mitchell Street in District 6, State of Alabama Possible Rights of Redemption of Timmy and Diane Cranfoot, Statewide Mortgage Corporation, First Family Financial Service Incorporated, Equa Prime Incorporated, and Providence Bank being the last known owners. And the amount is $4,266.46. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution assessing nuisance abatement, lien for demolition on property located at 303 North 30th Street in District 6. This is Kimberly Hudson, Gary Honeycutt, and wife Donna Honeycutt, Kim Alaka, and Eric McGee being the last known owners. The amount is $3,416.40. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution approving and issuance of an alcoholic beverage license. This is Atomic Johnny's Food LLC doing business as Atomic Johnny's, located at 510 Broad Street in District 5 and has applied for a restaurant retail liquor license. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
We have one no, motion carries to adopt.
Our final public hearing is a resolution approving issuance of an alcoholic beverage license, Jean Mark, Mark LLC doing business as Jean Mark, located at 601 Walden Street in District 5, has applied for an off-premise only retail beer and table wine license. Is there anyone to speak, who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
We have one no, motion carries to adopt.
Our next item is a resolution authorizing the fourth amended tax abatement agreement with Prince Metal Stamping USA. The original tax abatement agreement was granted in 2011. However, for a variety of reasons, the development, equipping of the facility has been delayed. This extension, the completion date to June 30th, 2020. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt. Is there any new business?
Yes, Madam President, I have two. The person's resolution 419 is authorizing application acceptance of a JAG, JAG grant for 2019. Has to be known as consent to consider.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent has been granted.
Now move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
I might say under that resolution, we were accepting a grant of $36,986, City of Gadsden. And actually, this one is Resolution 420, is a resolution authorizing interlocal agreement between the City of Gadsden, Etowah County Commission, and the Etowah County Sheriff's Department for 2019 JAG grant, as we announced consent.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Department reports, committees, boards. We have a citizen request passed out, Abbot Fraser, issues affecting the community. You come, give your name. And we have a five-minute time limit.
Madam President, Honorable Mayor Guydon, and the members of this committee, we're thankful for the privilege to take these moments to reflect again on what we're doing in the community. I passed out one of our flyers and some of you may have it. We are godly people and we believe that God has made councils and the government that when we establish our freedom in this country, it is the freedom to reach out and help one another. Many of you know I have ran several meetings in this city, including at Elliott Community Center, and we've been reaching a number of people. And we're thankful that many people are beginning to recognize the importance of the Bible. One of the things that we believe is that our nation can be recovered through the Word of God. All you have to do is study history and you'll understand that that is very meaningful. And so what we're doing now is something over on, it's a tent revival. We've started a meeting in Elliott Community Center and we worked with Councilman, the President's toes over at the Atkinson Center there at the church. And we feel that we're making a difference. It's a challenge, but we feel that a team can do it. And having played basketball and football, I can tell you I can appreciate teamwork. But what I'm saying here today, the theme of our temp meeting, is let the Bible speak, truth that matters. There are people right now, and I want to especially recognize Councilman Cannon, who is the district supervisor there, we appreciate him so much and I know he came out once. We were not, we were not there because on Sunday and Thursday, we have vacation Bible school. What we're doing is going into the community and we have a four M of tat. First of all, if we think about God, when he sent the Son Jesus here, he started a plan. And he, first of all, God designed, begins with a messenger and of course John the Baptist was a pro runner. Then he had a message and John Taught turned the people back to God. But then he had a mission and the mission was to restore the image of God in humanity because that's the way God created us. And the last thing was the method. The method means that we have to mingle with people. You cannot sit back in church or any place where it is, even the politicians, praise God for them, when they're getting ready to vote for office, they don't sit back, they go out and get involved. So what I'm saying to you and what I'm saying to this, this committee in this city, we've got to be more intentional in mingling with people. And there's one of the things, and I know my minute is fast, my minute's fast going, and one of the problems that we're finding, especially over in Forest West, now we had a Presbyterian church over there and they closed their church down because of a lot of older people and they just evidently couldn't. So the people in that community are young people. They have children, they have families. Many of them are even living in situations that sometimes the government may not realize it, but they endorse it. You say, well, how would they endorse it? Because when they get married, they cut the fee of some of those people. And I'm not saying that this is something that, you know, I'm totally opposed to, but I do say that some of the reasons for shacking is because when they live married, the fees are cut from the government. Can you imagine that affects one of God's commandments? Now, under that Ten Commandment, which is up on this, up on the, at our tent, it's a huge banner that's there that talks about the Ten Commandments. Let me tell you, God, they were not ten suggestions, they're ten commandments and they are for mankind because God created us in His image and Jesus came to restore that image in us. And in order to get it done, we have to respect God's methods. We respect the laws of the land and you know what's going on right now. You saw what happened, we've gotten more violent and it's, and it's getting worse, it's not getting best, better. And what we fear is that it's going to start legislation. Now, you cannot legislate morality. You can try to, but you know right now our prisons are filled. So how do you do it? You have to work for the heart. God promises that He can change people's heart. And if anybody in here are Christian, they ought to know that. If you're not a Christian, it's because you have not met Jesus because He transforms hearts. My wife and I, we're going out knocking on doors, but we need help. And you are here and you have been placed in office as servants and those of us that are members of this community ought to be concerned about what's going on, not just about what we can profit out of it because some of us are selfish. And what God has promised us is that if we go and do His will, He's going to help this city. And I think we all ought to take a burden upon it to help this city. Thank you.
I want to say, we need to be more intentional and we need to go out in the community and voice, yes, our opinions, but yet we need to be active in our community. Let us be more intentional and whatever you have that God has given to you, please, please, I'm begging you, we are begging you to share whatever you have. We are thinking about giving out different school supplies this coming Sunday and we are asking you to please get involved. God bless you.
Thank you. Thank you. At this time, we'll have comments from the council. Mayor?
I guess most of everybody noticed the new industry we got this past month. If you're not working and you're 18 or older, there's no excuse for not finding a good paying job with benefits in Gadsden, Alabama. And this new company coming in, they'll be taking applications, 18 to 20 dollars an hour plus benefits. It's a big, big company and, you know, parents, if you have somebody at home that's not working, 18 or older, get them a job. My dad always said, I'd say, Daddy, I need a little money. He'd say, get another job. So I always had two jobs, but it was good for me. Now I've got four, but anyway, I'm just telling you. But get a job, it'll help everybody, you and the whole city, trust me.
Councilman Williams?
Thank you, Madam President. Just very quickly, I want to just continue to ask us as a community and as a state and a nation to continue to pray for those, those cities and those, those communities that are dealing with some of the evil that's, that's been forced upon us with these senseless killings. Please continue to pray for these communities. And as, as we've always done historically, one of the things that I'm proudest of as a, as a U.S. citizen is that our, our communities typically rally around those in need and I want to continue to encourage that. And heed the message that was, that was issued by Pastor Fraser. We all have a responsibility to be active and involved. So, so again, let's, please, please continue to pray for those communities. Also want us to be mindful of, and I know I'm going to miss a few of these events, but first day of school is this week in our community and we have a number of groups who are very diligent each year that come out and either stand out in front of the school and welcome kids that take school supplies. I know a number of our fraternities and sororities will, will be doing that this week and, and as well as a number of nonprofit groups that'll be supporting that. So if you're close to any of these groups, if you have the ability to support any of these groups, please do so and, and please be available and present at these events so that we can show these, these young people how important education is for us in our community.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes, yes. I want to say thanks to Reverend Fraser and his wife for coming to the city and trying to do the work of the Lord. And I want to also ask people for prayer, but it's not just prayer and our thoughts going out to these different cities where all this violence is taking place. Our legislators, in the, in our leaders, you have to be careful what you say, what you, what's coming out of your mouth because people will take it the wrong way or they would take heed to it and, and they may go out and do something. Even though you didn't pull the trigger, you, if you're a leader and you talking this different stuff, it's not good. So we need to watch what we say and we need to continue to pray and we need to do something about all this gun violence that's going on in our country. And I also want to talk about the job fair that's coming up on the 27th. Just like the mayor just said, talked about all the jobs. We have so far 60 employers signed up with over 2,000 available job openings. And it will be at the venue on the 27th from 9 to 1 and then from 8 to 9, we will have a skills seminar. And also, we had a meeting last night with Ram, Remote Area Medical. They will be bringing that here in March of next year, 2020. We need volunteers, so you can call me at 256, text me, 256-504-5049. If you would like to volunteer, you will be able to get medical care free, no questions asked. You will be able to get dental or vision. On the first day, you, you have to choose, medical or dental. You, you get medical, but then you can choose between dental and vision. And then the next day, you can come back and get the other. They will make glasses on the spot and they will do all type of dental work on the spot. It's all free, free of charge. So I believe that's all I have, thank you.
Councilman Back?
Yes, thank you, President Tows. I would like to thank everybody for being here today, Reverend Fraser, you and your wife. Thank you so much for what you're doing in Gadsden and for your heart for the Lord. And I know God's going to, you know, His word does not come back void. And I hope that you, just pray that you guys will continue to, to pour out your love here in Gadsden. Also want to echo the mayor's comment, you know, we, just like in most things, there's a thing called momentum and we have momentum in Gadsden right now. Lot of positive things going on. You're hearing about jobs, you know, we always hear about there's no jobs, there's no future, there's, there's nothing to do. We have jobs that are available with good paying jobs. May not be the exact job you're looking for today, but you can always, you know, you're, you're more attractive to an employer when you have a job as if, unless you, if you don't have a job. So encourage your neighbors, your children, grandchildren, whoever it might be, there are jobs and there's people that are more than willing to help. And also want to remind everybody, school is back in session. So as you're driving around, slow down, slow your car down and pay attention to who's, what's going on around you, especially if you're in a school district. It's going to take a little more patience. I have one school in my district, Year Brown Elementary School, and I know it's, there's parking issues. It's in a neighborhood, so I encourage everybody to be careful, watch where you're driving, park where you're supposed to park, do not park where you're not supposed to park. And it'll, it'll be a great year. Just want to continue to pray for the cities that have been affected so tragically and, and so terribly. And want to also continue to pray here locally for our police force and our first responders. They have a really tough job, just recently, there's things in the paper, just this morning, of a tragic incident in Rainbow City. Somebody has to respond to that. So let's keep our local folks in your prayers as well. These are our neighbors, our friends, our church members and people that, that we know, know and love. So keep everybody in, locally here in your prayers and just thank you for everything that everybody does for the City of Gadsden.
Councilman Wilson?
Thank you. Again, Pastor Fraser, thank you for everything. I look forward to continuing to work with you. And, and to the point about the, the terrible gun violence that we've seen over the last week and, you know, I think I speak for everybody in this community when I say that it scares the hell out of me. You know, it's terrifying to see what's happening. And, and I was discussing this on social media the other day. The militarization of our politics in this country is what scares me the most. I mean, every day you hear terms in the news and on social media about an attack on a way of life or an assault on our values. We have battleground states and, you know, politicians being caught in the crosshairs on issues and, and you have patriots and traitors. on issues, and, and you have patriots and traitors and, and soldiers on the campaign trail. All of these military terms that we use in politics, but the fact is, this isn't a war, these are social issues that we're dealing with. And so my only request to this community, for anybody who's listening, is please, can we just calm down and try to talk about these social issues civilly, and realize that this is not a war? This is not the front lines in Afghanistan or Iraq, even though it's starting to feel like it more and more every day. This is not a war. We have so many disgruntled individuals out there committing acts of war in this community and in this country, and it's just a matter of time before it happens right here in Gaston. Every day I see people, grown adults that I grew up respecting, my baseball coaches, my football coaches, you know, people in my community that I grew up looking up to, saying the most awful, hurtful, hateful things about somebody that I know they used to respect every day. And it's all because their political affiliation, or who they voted for, for president. I do not care who you support for president. I care about this community, and I care about the people that I walk up and down Broad Street with every day, and the people that I see in the grocery store every day. These are real people. This is not a, a social media conversation that's happening and impacting people somewhere off in the distance that we don't know about. This is right here in our community, and I'm telling you, I see that same rhetoric and that same hatred in our community and on social media, and it's only a matter of time before it bubbles over here. So I ask everybody in this community to please just stop and think about what you're arguing about. Stop and think about the damage that's being done to our culture. You know, talk through your issues, and if somebody disagrees with you, it doesn't mean that they're a threat to your way of life, it doesn't mean that they're a threat to your well-being, it just means they have a different perspective than you, and that they see the world differently, and they have a better idea. We all want the same things. We all want this community to be better, we all want this country to be better. We just happen to have some very different ideas about how to do it, and, and this militarization of, of politics isn't helping anything. So I appreciate having this public forum to be able to say that, and I hope that it somehow impacts somebody and, and gets us to a closer place to where we can actually talk through our problems as a, as civilized people. Thank you, Madam President.
Councilman Cannon?
Thank you. Reverend Frazier, I appreciate you coming over to Elliott Community Center and preaching the word of God, and over on Forest Avenue, Presbyterian Church. We've got a lot of people in Walnut Park, South Gaston, Oak Park, South Gaston, all over the city that needs God. They've just, they've turned from Him, and they need to get back to Him, and we need to just get out in our communities, everyone does. Every church needs to get out in their community. That's what it's all about, witnessing to the people in the City of Gaston, witnessing all over. We just got to get out and start doing that, and I thank you for what you're doing over on Forest Avenue, witnesses for some of those homeless people and the people that's got problems. We all have problems, some are just a little different than others, but I read a comedian, I appreciate you for doing that, doing God's work.
Councilman Reed?
Ooh, Reverend, end the line again. Y'all done said everything. When I was in the first grade, we said the Lord's Prayer, and we salute the flag. So what did we do? We bowed him out. We just got to be the smartest people in the world. So maybe we better do a reverse deal and go right back to basically that, and teach our kids how to read and comprehend. And again, one thing, and I'll say it every, every time, it's not the gun, it's the crazy man behind it. Guns don't kill nobody, but that crazy man behind it does, and if we'd have got to him sooner, we might have been able to do something about that, Richard. I hope so. That's all I got.
Amen. Do I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved. You wanted to know.
Oh, counsel?
Oh.